The city retained the services of FMG to conduct a facility study for the police department. Andrew Mayo and Brian Mead are here this evening to give you the report. And I think I'm going to, Andrew's going to get started and just give you a little background about the study and what the recommendations are.
Sure. Thanks, Mark. Like Mark said, I'm Andrew Mayo. Seeing familiar faces from when we were up here for the city hall presentation. Brian was not part of that, so introduced Brian Mead, who's one of our principals and heads up a lot of our public safety design. So with that, we'll get started. So here's the agenda for this evening. We've kind of got nine points we want to hit, and we'll go through those one by one. Feel free to jump in if there's any questions. I don't want this to be a sterile presentation. I invite critique, criticism, comments, anything throughout the process. So don't feel like you have to hold your Q and A to the end. So getting into the executive summary, a lot of this language can be found in the report itself. Just felt like we reiterate it as part of our presentation here. So our findings were, you know, facilities for police in Oshkosh, there's three facilities, varying uses and ages and conditions of those three facilities. And there have been changes to the buildings over the decades, but nothing wholesale has really happened since the Public Safety Building was built in the 80s. So getting into the methodology we use to approach this study, we started with an analysis of what we feel are the space needs for the police. That's based on our understanding of national trends as well as getting more regional and local. And part of that space need study is gathering the information necessary to really understand how Chief Smith and his staff operate. And you guys were kind enough to share a lot of information with us, so we were able to dive into that and really get an understanding of who Oshkosh police are as part of this process. And then, once we had that information gathered, we were also interested in speaking with the staff themselves and getting an understanding of how they feel the police department operates and what they feel like is lacking or working well in the facility. So this is a list of those staff members that we held interviews with over the course of two days. Brian and I really worked well with getting through each staff member's understanding of what we were doing as well as what their kind of hopes and dreams are for a project as a whole, if it ever moves forward.
If I could add, Andrew, it was also important to note that this was a bottom-up study, so it wasn't someone at the top saying, "You only have this much square footage, so, you know, try to fit it in here." It was truly listening to all of the stakeholders, all of the departments and heads under chief, and saying, "Okay, you know, what do you need? What are the staff projections in 10 years, 20 years? Even without any staff increases, what are the things that you do not have in your building today to operate even more efficiently that any other state-of-the-art police department in the country would have with a force of your size?" So it was really important to understand those kind of thresholds, which we think we did.
And Chief Smith was really good in involving his staff and kind of vetting out, right, who are we interviewing? How much time are we allotting each person? And just making sure that all the voices in his force were heard, just so that we had a really comprehensive understanding of how they operate.
It's also important to point out that not only was it the police department staff, but he's also I, city IT staff, as well as facilities maintenance. They have the, facility maintenance has the heart and soul of the building. They know the, they know all the little dark secrets of the place, so it was important to have them as a part of the process as well.
I just wish we knew that the council member was intimately aware of what's going on in the building before we went through the study.
It's quite all right. There is areas that I haven't been in a long time.
So in conjunction with those interviews, we also started establishing some of the project goals. And we came up with a list of 10 goals that everybody on the project team really felt hit what we were trying to accomplish with this study. I won't read through them. These are the same goals that we identified in the report itself. So first five here, and then you've got six through 10 on slide two. But we really felt like this wasn't a wants list, it was more of a needs list for a 21st century policing facility for the city of Oshkosh. We also established questions to be answered as part of the study. So we don't want to go into the study, and like Brian said, we really want to approach it bottom-up so that we're delving into, all right, what's the purpose of the study? We've identified the goals. Now, what are the questions that we're asking and hoping that this study is answering? So again, you've got these in your packets as well as in the report itself. We identified four main questions that we really felt important to answer as part of the study. With that, with all that information we gathered, one of the first steps we take, once we digest all the information, is coming up with a spreadsheet that we call a building program. That program really identifies spaces you have now, spaces we would expect you to have now, and then what your space needs would be 20 years from now. So Brian has done this on countless facilities throughout the country, so we really lean on his expertise to bring a national perspective down to locales like Oshkosh. And so with that, Brian, want to start?
Yeah, so I was just going to say, too, every community, municipality is unique. So even though we have a lot of national expertise, we really listen and want to tailor the program to your needs. So any good program, you know, we always talk about separating the wants from the needs. So there's obviously a lot of wants, but we go through at least two to three rounds of programming to hone in on what are the most critical needs. And those were some of the questions and goals that Andrew went through. So we felt that by the time we got to the end of the program, the 10-year projection, the 20-year projection, those had been vetted with Chief and his staff and all the stakeholders at least three different times to really get to a program that we thought was based on a lot of good information. Because nobody wants to, you know, whittle it down to a building that is pretty much at capacity from the day you open it. I mean, that's something we hear time and time again, that sometimes if municipal, municipality is lucky enough to get a new building, if they're not too careful about what things get cut in value engineering or the budget, you know, you may find yourself in a building that doesn't have room for some future midterm growth or flexibility. So there is some flexibility and growth built into these numbers as well. There's even some projected goals that even came after this program, when we did an interactive design workshop towards the end of our study, which you'll see in a few slides. One of the things, especially in any Wisconsin climate, you think about, you know, the snow and the ice and the lifecycle cost of your vehicles and your radio equipment, and, you know, how much those life cycles of a vehicle could be extended if it had indoor, covering indoor protection versus outside. So in our study, we even looked at, well, what if a large part of the fleet, the city-owned vehicles, could actually be in a covered garage? So some of the square footage that you'll see in upcoming, kind of the options that we came up with, do include that sort of ad alternate where you could potentially, depending on if there was a drive-in basement, you know, depending on the site, you could even get indoor parking.
And as part of this spreadsheet, you'll see a lot of numbers, and we didn't want to be misleading by trying to hide any numbers. So you'll see the existing total square footage kind of really exceeds the need. However, there's a lot of that square footage that really can't be allocated to efficient police use, particularly the second floor of the Public Safety Building. So we have that broken out as a separate line item to show you guys that it's not purely a square footage number that you should go by. It's, all right, you've got this existing square footage, how much of it can actually be efficiently used by the police department? And that number takes into account the Public Safety Building, Sawyer Street, as well as Third Ave., and the three buildings on Third Ave. So it's, it's not necessarily, you've got 97-plus thousand square feet existing, why don't we just reuse that? It gets into cost prohibitive land once you start looking at renovating some of the existing spaces that you already have. And we'll get further into why in some upcoming slides here. With that, as part of a study, space needs is one component, but then we also want to understand the existing conditions of your facilities. So we took a look at 420 Jackson Street. Throughout the building, the theme that we saw recurring the most was the inefficient use of space. And it's no fault of city staff or police staff that that space is not being used efficiently. It's just the nature of that building and how it was constructed, and the inability to really do anything renovation-wise on the second floor of the building due to the construction of the jail, and how cost prohibitive it would be to change the way that slab is structured and to get rid of the jail cells themselves.
And actually, the jail was built in what's called a linear jail, which means it's elongated, the hallways, and then you have the pods. And there was never an officer that was directly in those pods unless there was a disturbance. They had a, like a walkway, so what, the difference was the jail was on the outside of the building, and the inside of the building was the guts of the jail. That's where the kitchen was, there was a booking counters, all that. So all the inmates are on the outside exterior. That's why you have all those big windows on the outside of the building facing out, because it's a linear design jail. Where the current jail is a direct supervision jail that was built with the idea of office correction officers right in the, in the cells with the inmates, but they're in a protected area from the inmates.
And you bring up the windows. It's interesting that the chief's staff, we talk about well-building a lot and the thought that, you know, the occupants of the building really need to feel welcome and engaged in the building, whereas this current building, there's more windows in the jail than there are in the offices on the first floor. And then, obviously, in the subterranean level, there really aren't any windows. So that natural daylighting just doesn't happen in this building.
So I'm assuming if you were talking about a new construction, you'd be looking at a lot more southern exposure, natural light.
You know, you could do a lot like we do with the central garage. You know, when lights come on, lights come off, you'd have those skylights that could bring light into the facility and things like that.
And just the, the building and energy codes alone have come
Right.
light-years ahead from where this building was built in the 80s, so.
It opened in 1980, it was constructed '77, '78, '79.
So getting back to some of the architectural concerns during our existing conditions analysis, the exterior envelope of the building is precast panel. What we noticed on a lot of those precast panels is when they set the panels, they set them with a little gap for expansion contraction. Well, there's a joint sealant that keeps weather out. Due to the age, that joint sealant is beginning to fail, and will, if you continue operation out of the facility, will need to be replaced. So it's a lot of these maintenance needs that will start to crop up if you maintain operation in this facility long-term. We also noticed some ponding on the roof near the penthouse in some areas, and then getting into excessive.
Yeah, it's a penthouse?
Yeah.
I didn't get that tour.
You've got to watch your head as you're walking through the ductwork up there.
Is that what these photos are? Here are those joints?
So this, the first photo there, it's not showing up on the screen itself.
The photo on top right?
The top photo is in the jail.
Correct.
And then, that photo to the right is some spalling on the precast panel at the roof level. And then, the photo to the left is getting to my next bullet there, the accessibility. While you do have a ramp into the building, the ramp does not meet current accessibility guidelines and standards. So that would be something that, again, if we're to maintain operation long-term, we'd recommend doing some of these incremental accessibility upgrades. The ramp being one of them, restrooms, signage throughout the building, handrails throughout the building wherever there are staircases. And what we noticed, same thing we noticed in the city hall study, is the majority of the door hardware is knobs and not easily to grasp as compared to levers. So again, these are all things that, when the building was built, perfectly well and good. We have a better understanding of handicaps and accessibility in building construction now, so that the guidelines have changed. And then, the last bullet there is just some building code issues that, if the building were to be built today, we'd expect these things to be addressed. So the elevator lobby, there's no smoke compartment, and throughout the building, there are no sprinklers, which could be of particular concern on the second floor of the building due to some record storage. So the fact that your records are being stored there, if there were ever something to happen, I think Chief would agree, that's really the only place where they're stored. So if they were to go up in smoke, they're gone.
It'd be a really bad thing.
Yeah.
Can I just go back to the project goals real quick? So the first one, the primary goal of looking at meeting the city's needs for the next 20, 30 years? So was part of the scope at all to discuss, like, if there were to be a new built, whether or not it's in that time span, wise to still be in this location, given potential growth boundaries?
Yes. Yeah, and so that's
Later on.
Jumping ahead to the end of the presentation, we can talk about site considerations. So some more images of what we identified in those bullets on the previous slide. So left to right here, you're looking at a bathroom that does not meet current accessibility Top photo there is in the jail. Again, it's the police making the best use they can with the old jail facility by creating some storage area for some of their bike fleet. The bottom photo there just gives you an illustration of the door hardware being inadequate by today's standards. And then, these three on the right are up on the roof with some of the ponding issues, some of the deterioration of the building materials that, you know, again, if you were to maintain this building long-term, they'd be some things you'd want to address.
One other thing to, just to point out regarding the second floor, not only are there records stored up there, we also have long-term evidence stored, homicides, serious felonies that we have to keep for 70 years. That's our storage for long-term evidence, so that's a, that's a critical piece for us.
Well, and you always want to maintain your evidence storage appropriately, because you are dual-certified in CLEO and WILEIAG.
Yes.
So in order to maintain those certifications, the chief has to meet certain criteria for evidence storage, as well as other aspects of his operation. We didn't see everything bad in the building. There is some good. We did notice that the city has put some money towards the building, so we wanted to give a nod to that as well. Particularly on the first floor of the building, we did see that the report writing, the roll call, locker room, as well as the range, we saw the work that had been done recently in all those areas. But again, as we get through the study, we had a better understanding of, you know, do you want to continue pouring money into this building, or does it really make sense to look at some other options? We also engaged a consultant, engineering consultant, to get a better understanding of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems of the building. As Chief mentioned, these existing conditions analysis were done in conjunction with city maintenance staff, because those guys are the ones that really have the best understanding of the building and its positives and negatives. So there were some positives, there were also some negatives with the mechanical systems, particularly the heating plants. The cooling plant is in much better shape. The heating has been addressed since the building was built. However, it was, it might have been penny-wise and pound-foolish in that some of the boilers that were installed are well past their useful life and are really not in good condition at all. So again, it's a matter of addressing these things if you want to maintain this building long-term. Electrical, a lot of the electrical distribution throughout the building is really not up to today's standards, or just obsolete equipment that, as you maintain the equipment, you're going to run into issues with finding parts to be able to match one-for-one what you're replacing. We did see that you've recently replaced the generator, so that's a positive. But a lot of the other distribution throughout the building does not meet 21st century policing standards, nor does it meet current codes.
We also recently replaced some air conditioning condensing units. Because this is good to fair, I thought that was fairly recent.
Well, we replaced one of the lower-level ones, or there's several on the list. We also took a look at the existing conditions of 110 Sawyer and Third Avenue. 110 Sawyer, the building is generally in good shape right now. It's being used as a storage building with particular reference to the police. The police mobile command, as well as some of the ancillary vehicles are being stored here. It's really the only place in the city that the mobile command actually fits inside, thus necessitating the use of that building. We know that, long-term, the fire department is looking to put their training facility in that building, and as part of that project, the police, as well as the other occupants of the storage areas of that building, would need to vacate. So we did consider that as part of our study. Third Ave., there are two older buildings at the front of the site, Buildings A and B. They are in rough shape, whereas Building C is a metal building that was constructed more recently. However, the chief uses that as another area of long-term evidence storage, and it doesn't really have the heating and cooling capacities that are needed to maintain the evidence So with that, I'll hand it over to Brian, so that he can walk you through some of the solutions to the issues that we came up with at part of the study.
Great. So last July and August was a lot of that programming, existing facility analysis. And then, come, I think it was early September, we did some of these, we did a planning workshop with the chief and some of his staff. And so it was kind of a couple-hour exercise to look at three different options that sort of were emerging as goals for the study. So the first one, as Andrew talked about, was, okay, what are the immediate needs? And depending on which project comes first, if the fire training facility were to move forward, how do the functions for police that currently occupy that Sawyer site, how do we quickly, efficiently, economically get those off that site and, you know, into another place? So that was the immediate, short-term study. The next one was saying, okay, is there anything about the existing Public Safety Building that can be repurposed and might last you five years, 10 years? Once the court left, you know, how do you best utilize that whole part of the first floor? So we thought, well, let's definitely look at a medium-term solution. And then, finally, looking long-term, you know, any study is really going to look at, again, the whole lifecycle, growth in communities, growth in projected staff increases, and said, okay, if we do grow to whatever size, 30 years, 40 years, where's the best place in the community to put this facility? And then, where is the land that would accommodate that? Because a lot of times, these facilities, you think about the parking, you think about the separation between public, staff parking, whether it's a one-story, two-story building. I mean, these take acres of property. So so many times in communities around the country, you may have a law enforcement agency just like in Oshkosh that has been so embedded in the downtown fabric of your community for decades where you think, well, gosh, you have to be there, you know? But unlike fire, it's, sometimes it's more psychological, and there's that comfort level. But fire, where response times are much more critical than police, police do often have the flexibility to be more flexible, because their patrol groups are already out, there usually is more flexibility in finding that bigger acreage. So even though we didn't pinpoint a specific address, once we get to the third option, you will see that, at a minimum, it looks like we would need at least six acres for a new facility based on this program that we completed. So then, the challenge, and this will get towards the end, is what might be some of the next steps for the city and your group is, okay, if that's a long-term goal, six acres, seven acres, where in the community does that currently exist, or where should you start targeting? You know, so that'll be one of the next step goals. So with those three options, again, we had a really engaging, interactive workshop. Chief, I hope you enjoyed that. It was a lot, go ahead.
And this might be, I don't know, a strange question, but is it assumed that 21st century, that it still all needs to be centralized and not necessarily, you know, a smaller hub with multiple satellites?
I can speak to that. It really is dependent upon your community size. And we try to do some creative program as it relates to getting out into the community, as you know, and trying to, trying to be accessible to the community. When you have, when you have a city that is larger in acreage or in square miles than the city of Oshkosh, and certainly precinct-type facilities are where many law enforcement agencies will go. My previous agency, we had two separate precincts, as well as headquarters, because we were 400 square miles. There's a, there's certainly a need for that when you have a lot of land that you cover, because you want to cover geographical, allow people to have central services, be able to do whatever function they feel like they need to do in a law enforcement agency, no matter where they live. But for the size of our community, it really doesn't serve us well, I think, to have precincts out there. Substations, yes, precincts, not so much.
Okay.
So we, actually, taking the program, we developed puzzle piece blocks. So we do this exercise often, where in the course of a few hours, we get engaged feedback from the staff, what should go in the basement, what should go on the first floor, second floor? So we use that kind of strategy for a couple hours to kind of look at the concepts that emerged. So again, short-term option, I won't read through all these, but again, it was really to find space for the Sawyer Street vehicle storage. You know, those were some of the goals to really look at for this short-term solution. So flipping to the graphic, the current parcel just south of Public Works is composed of three buildings, as Andrew said earlier. So altogether, they total currently Buildings A, B, and C, just over 10,000 square feet. But it, you know, it doesn't have, you know, each of the separated buildings don't together really create the contiguous kind of storage needs and space and site circulation for some of their bigger vehicles that we felt a newer building would be with better site approach. So as you can see right now, you have a limited, barely 20-foot drive aisle between Buildings A and B that gets you to the back of C. So what we decided in this part of the concept is, we said, well, okay, if we keep Building C, and maybe that becomes used for vehicle evidence storage in the back, maybe Building A and B get torn down, and we create a new 7,200-square-foot building, this could be a pre-engineered construction, so we're thinking very economical systems here. And, you know, 70 to 80% of that would be for those ancillary vehicles, the specialty vehicles, for the command vehicle, the larger vehicles in the fleet. And those would all be, have proper turning radius, proper, you know, vehicle bay, garage door widths. And then, the other spaces that you see in orange would be, again, long-term, larger evidence support spaces, some mechanical needs just to support that building. So it was very much a very nuts-and-bolts-type building to really support that number-one goal of, how do we get the stuff out of Sawyer Street in the most economical way that still meets, you know, city codes? And so that was what we did here. And again, we have, you know, assumed budgets to go with each of these that will be kind of the last section of our presentation. of the last section of our presentation. So this was that first immediate need. And then the second one we looked at, like I said, was saying, well, let's focus on the public safety building. And what we actually did is we said, let's specifically focus on the first floor. You know, the lower level has evidence storage, it has patrol, it has the range, those indoor spaces. We said, well, the lower level, you know, is 100% occupied right now. So it's, you know, a lot of renovations have happened at the lower level. The second level with the sprinklers, with just all of those jail cells, the expense it would cause that, plus the adjacency of having to go upstairs is not ideal. So we said, well, the biggest bang for the buck to do any short-term modifications might be that first floor, especially in regards to the courts, that I know there's been a lot of, in fact, just recently, obviously, with the computer lab, you know, really trying to occupy and use some of those court spaces. So we said, let's look at the first floor and let's kind of re-envision it here and see how could we, over the next so many years, maybe make better use of it. So we have two graphics that we used during our study, and I thought they would be very helpful for you tonight to kind of see what we were up against. So a lot of times, we'll color-code existing plans, just so by the colors, you can kind of see how, just literally dramatically, how much the colors are spread out. So for example, the command staff is in green. And, you know, a lot of times, you think of efficiency in the chief with his captains and his deputy chief and his other support staff wanting to be very close together so you can have better communication lines, you don't have to travel very far. Well, the green was all spread out just because of the space they had, where were their windows, where were their bigger offices? You know, likewise, there's, over the years, there's been swapping between, well, where does records go and where does detectives go? And, you know, for some years, they were in, detectives were in the offices, and then they went into open bullpen mode. Records did the same thing. So you can see the sprinkling of yellow and blue. And then the corridor, I mean, today's public safety buildings limit public access. I mean, you really want the security and the comfort and reassurance of all the staff spaces being behind lock and key. And your lobbies, you want to be, you want them to be welcoming and inviting, but you don't want cross-building lobbies that are 14 feet wide that are taking up 2,500 square feet of space. I mean, today's brand-new police stations of this exact size, you would have a much more concentrated lobby that might be 800 to 900 square feet. And it would have one way in, one way out, you know, record clerks could see who's coming and going right away, who's going into the restrooms. Again, you know, the public safety building just inherited this plan when half of it was courts. So when you come in, when anyone comes in, whether you're homeless or whether you're a resident, the important eyes on the people coming into this building can't see them right away. You can't see who's going into the restrooms, which is why they get locked sometimes. You can't see, except for relying on cameras. So there's so many things about this first floor that are just really difficult to improve. But we wanted to do diligence and say, okay, how can we improve the adjacencies? How can we minimize the public wandering that happens in that hallway? So you can see just by the colors that we said, okay, let's put records in yellow. What if they went all the way up at the point of the building? What if Command Suite, which is all green, got centralized kind of around the chief's office and where it is right now on the south side? All of the light blue is all of your detectives, which might get much more compact, centralized. Some of the trends today are to group detectives in multiple offices, but still have this open collaboration, teaming island. The space in the middle, which is very, that triangular space, for any of you that have toured the building and have seen how open it is, and any detective will tell you how difficult it is for them to do their job when you have people crossing through all the time. If you try to have a meeting in that middle conference table, it's very distracting. So we said, well, why not take the triangular middle and actually turn it into a proper training room that is, you know, not distracting workstations around it? And then all of the community room spaces that today's public safety buildings do have a component of outreach, so all of the darker blue would be various amounts of training slash community rooms. And then that mauve color, that pinkish color, we're proposing, you know, a short-term solution could be to cut that lobby in half so that you're really limiting the public access. You're making the building safer. And the light gray becomes, you know, staff-only spaces. So this was definitely, and you'll see the price associated with it, but this was our effort to say, hey, if you wanted to really spend some money for a short-term solution for five years, this doesn't check all the boxes and buckets, but it really does improve some things that I know the chief and his staff said were pretty important. And then finally, last but not least, you know, these studies look at a long-term solution. And so this long-term solution does add up to about 96,000 square feet if you were to do that indoor garage. So even though the summary program in the report said maybe the program could be around 60 square feet, 60,000 square feet, if you really want to do up to 70 to 80 vehicles in a nice, protected garage environment to really make sure that those vehicles would last as long as they could, then that's what led to a 96,000-square-foot footprint here and at least a six-acre site. So the six-acre site went down at least an acre because in this scheme, we are showing almost most of the basement to be an 85-car garage in the lower level. We also looked at a slab-on-grade. If we said, well, let's not do a fully enclosed garage, let's do those 85 cars, surface parking, you put that back in the back of the building, that would add almost another acre. So depending, you know, you could say six to seven acres, maybe even eight acres, if that's what you started to look for. But again, it shows public parking on the bottom, which has enough parking if you do have flexible training rooms or meeting rooms where you do need more parking from time to time. It shows two ways in and out. I think any site you want to look forward to in the community really wants to have two ways, two curb cuts. A corner is always good if you can have two exits to two different streets because depending on traffic patterns or if there's an accident or blockage on one, patrol staff could get out the other. Secured parking lots with fences are today's trend. I mean, they don't always happen with budgets, but you do try to plan for them. And then the impound lot, trying to bring vehicle impound lot all onto one site. I mean, trying to master plan and get everything on one site is key. So very quickly, we had then the three-story planning diagram. We did 40,000 square feet of the program, could be on the first floor. You know, your yellow is, again, records, all of the blue are training components, you know, having wellness programs are so important today. So having physical wellness programs where they have proper fitness workout rooms, locker rooms, you know, training programs, all of the evidence could be right on the main level. You know, today, they do the best they can with evidence in the basement, but sometimes evidence is, gets really heavy, you know, pulling things down to the basement, it's not ideal. So to get that on grade would be nice. Patrol functions, having natural light, again, today's patrol's in the basement, but getting in on the first floor would be good. So that's first floor. The second floor might just be detectives and command suite on an upper level, which might be 17,000 square feet with supporting stairs, elevators, restrooms, amenities like that. And then finally, the lower level in the study that we did was mostly underground parking. And then the blue was the indoor range. So the parking, the firing range could be down there underneath the program.
So this assumes three stories?
Two stories plus basement.
Okay.
Yes.
So there wasn't really any looking at using the existing space and going more stories?
Can't.
Yeah?
And existing building.
If you take the building down.
The existing triangular building?
Yep.
You could take it down, but then you're ending up with a taller building, less efficient. I mean, it didn't really meet the goals of the study. Really, what we wanted is to make sure that the chief has an efficient layout of the building so that he doesn't have staff spending time traveling up four flights or up an elevator.
You could probably fit it, I mean, we would never propose another triangular building.
No.
Oh, no.
I mean, you wouldn't necessarily need six acres if you went.
Correct. But the parking, parking is always a huge part of that formula. I mean, you can look at the site plan and just see how much, you know, look at the dark grade for the building, and then, you know, at least two-thirds of that site is related to site and parking. But that's the issue here, I think, more importantly, is even though you have the nice fenced-in lot for some of your vehicles now, when you think of the current lot and how it's shared between city staff, city public visitors, the public safety building, we think that this building, to get the type of training rooms it would need and the parking needs and trying to bring back the storage for vehicles, for command suite, all of that would need probably more site than you have. Even if we could get a three- or four-story building, I mean, unless you start really incorporating a full underground garage that could accommodate some of the larger vehicles, it would be quite a challenge to get that. And then there's always the issue of phasing. You know, if you have a one-to-one-and-a-half-year construction, demolition and construction, it would be at least a year and a half, then for that year and a half, where do you hold operations? So where in the community can you, you know, do, can do your operations? I mean, sometimes you can pare it back, but you still need a place for patrol to meet, for records, detectives. So that gets into a whole other kind of phasing challenge. So as we go into the last section of cost, this is a chart that's in the study, which I think is always a helpful visual. If you kind of see, want to see, of the 10 project goals, which goals does the immediate solution meet? Which goals does the option one kind of midterm solution meet? And then which goals might that long-term solution meet? So again, this is a great kind of check reference if you want to go back and forth to see that.
And, yeah, the two different circles, the open circle is really, we're starting to meet that goal with that solution. The closed circle is, that solution meets that goal. And then also identifying, in how many years are you going to have to look at additional space that was really goal number one of the study?
So the final, quickly, the final question to any study is, okay, how much are these options going to cost? So that's what Andrew will kind of finish with the last two or three slides.
So just to rehash, a year ago, when we talked about City Hall, we talked about project budget and what's actually included in a project budget. So we just wanted to give you guys an outline of soft costs versus hard costs and making sure that you have a complete project budget going into this. And that's really what we looked at as part of this spreadsheet. So the spreadsheet identifies the hard costs, the soft costs, makes sure that you have appropriate contingencies and allowances in place. And then what we identified as part of our presentation tonight is, if you were to do this project today, here's what the costs would be. And that first line.
The green row.
Yeah, the green row with the yellow highlights. Those yellow highlights are what I would budget if you were to do this project today. And we feel comfortable with those numbers, conservative enough to make sure that you're covering all your costs as part of the project. Go ahead.
So these are eight-year out?
Yeah, so we're taking a look at construction cost escalation, assuming a three-and-a-half percent escalation per year, and then escalating it out a number of years, depending on which option. So the immediate need, we said, well, if you design that this year and construct it next year, you're just under $1 million and a half. Option one, that we understand is going to take a little bit more of fiscal planning on your part, so we escalated that out to 2022. And then option two escalated all the way out to 2028. But you can see the difference in $20,000 versus $20,000 on that option two. You're just over, just under $9 million difference. So it's, it's a.
The bottom line is, council would spend $1 million a year for five years, and you'd still wouldn't have anything. So why would you spend the $5 million for five years? To me, the best option is really to plan a new police department.
Did John, did they tear down the transit, the old transit building yet on Third Street?
Did they what?
Have we torn down the transit building where the buses used to be on Third Street?
You know, that building could be, for a term, could be used instead of building on Third Avenue, is to look at that transit and build a police department on the land that we have owned, on the Boteworks property, which is over six acres.
Riverfront Police Department?
Why not? Because nothing else is going there. That might be an incentive. And then you take the rest of the safety building, you don't tear it down, and you take non-function city services out of this building and put it in the safety building. That's my recommendation.
I was just going to say, didn't you guys do the City Hall?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Was there any, yeah, looking at taking care of some things here in the same building, maybe?
Which building?
Because it was $15 million to remodel City Hall, wasn't it?
Correct.
All right. So if you pulled the police department out, didn't spend that $5 million on a Band-Aid over there?
Right.
Pulled the police department out, built a new station, that's been the 15 here, spent about three and remodeled the police department and put city staff over there that maybe doesn't need to be here.
We still got the ADA and the sprinkler and all that other stuff, too.
Well, you tear the building down, then what do you got?
So what we've done in other municipalities is combined facilities, and I don't know if there's a palette for that in Oshkosh, but, you know, police and fire is kind of that natural public safety. But then there's also police and City Hall is something that can be looked at. It would require a bigger building and bigger space, but it, that's an option that you can put on the table.
I can tell you that from my experience, I mean, I did a combination in Grand Shute, but it's a much smaller community. So the building for, that covered both police, fire, Public Works, was the size of the proposed building here for just police. So that just gives you an idea of the scope of what you would need.
Got what, 25 officers and we have 101?
No, I don't know what the number is now, but, you know, we had looked out for so many years. But it was a 96,000-square-foot building, and this is also, coincidentally, 96,000 what FGM is proposing for just police. And Grand Shute located it in a greenfield, best way to describe it. Grand Shute is suburban community is much different from Oshkosh and urban community. City halls generally are closer to the people, more centralized. Police departments don't necessarily have that requirement, so you'd have to have something that would meet both needs. And I don't know if necessarily we have enough footprint here that would cover a combined facility. It's not to say a combined facility wouldn't make sense, it would make sense with the right footprint. But then you're talking more about, was it about 30,000 square feet, Andrew, for us, for City Hall?
I think it was a little over 40.
Okay, so 40 plus, you're talking about 140,000 square feet. Usually the foot, the math is you've got about four times the building size for your building, for your, for your land. So you'd be looking at, you know, 600,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So you're talking about 10-plus acres.
It's definitely a discussion of where you want the site to be. And like you said, you know, you like the downtown site of City Hall, so it's not necessarily something you want to change. So that's, that's really a conversation, and I skipped ahead to our next steps here.
And we've got that meeting in five minutes.
Right, that's why I skipped ahead. This is our last slide here. I just wanted to go through, all right, now that, now that you have this study in front of you, what are your next steps? And we've kind of hit on step number one, which, which option is really the option that's right for Oshkosh? And once you do that, then starting to identify where you want to place that option and how to implement it. So that, these are your steps to implement it, refining that plan so you have a really good understanding of what you're getting, what you're budgeting for, and then placing that budget into a capital improvement program so that you have a plan in place for how to finance something of this magnitude. And then last bullet there is just to give you guys a good understanding of what a project schedule would look like once you do say go. Site selection's about six to 12 months, design is nine to 12, bidding is just a short one-month period, and then construction's 12 to 18 months. So potentially, you're looking at three-plus years by the, by the time you say go until you actually have an occupied building.
We typically don't ask for council's direction at a workshop, purposes of you to listen, absorb. If there's any follow-up questions, certainly we can, we can field those, work with FGM as necessary. But within the next 30 days, we'll put it back on the agenda for, for council discussion about where you want to go next.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on